Okay, the meeting will come to order. It is the 5th of June. We'll have council time and begin with our councillor role call.
Councillor Young.
Here.
And councillor Bowerman.
Present.
Chair Mevige.
Present.
And councillor Marshall.
Here.
And councillor Belkot is absent today.
Amendments to the agenda.
None today.
And I'm showing no executive sessions, is that true?
That is correct.
Okay, any public comment on agenda items only?
Yes, Bruce Barnes, if you'd like to go up to the mic.
Good afternoon councillors, my name's Bruce Barnes, Clark County resident. I'd like to comment here on the new business of 5.1, city grant letter in support of the 18th Street Trail. That's part of Burnt Bridge Creek, I believe, right? Trail system? The Burnt Bridge Creek Trail System that's going to extend out all the way to Camas, Washougal. So have any of you been down to that Burnt Bridge Creek Trail System and seen what's going on down there? I don't think our county wants to be part of that because it's just a repetitive cleanup. And when I look at the city rules for the park, they're breaking all the rules. And that's why I'm serving them with a lawsuit for the destruction of the city. And I'm serving them from Lewis County. Not the city of Vancouver, not Clark County, but Lewis County. Because they're not doing their job, but they've actually put in bathrooms down there. The graffiti, the damage, the damage to all the plants, the fires. Says the park is closed from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. There's a massive amount of homeless down there, little children living in there, people riding motorcycles up and down that parkway. It's just a haven for absolute chaos. Over there by Wenco, there's been multiple stabbings, and then they run back into their homeless camps and nobody can catch them. I mean, I don't want to support this because I don't want my tax dollars being spent for this repetitive cleanup, just right out here at Millplain today. They're repetitively cleaning up this homeless disaster out here again and again. I came last week to a meeting about providing another 150 beds for homeless people. How many people that are non-taxpayers in our community are we going to support, right? And this just plays into that whole thing. When I drive around our roads, there's more important things to be fixed in our community which are part of our road system that's destroyed. We should be putting that money into that instead. I mean, especially if you're partnering with the US Department of Transportation. Have you driven from Richfield down I-5 to Vancouver? Oh my God, it's like a motocross track, you know? So, I mean, that's why I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned. And when I look at how taxes were structured, you know, they were structured to have bond levies put out, or war bonds, so the taxpayer had a say in what was going on. If they wanted to support that, then they bought those bonds. We don't have a say anymore. The five people that sit up here get to do all their projects really without the citizens having a say on anything anymore. And I understand that you're elected, but people are really frustrated. And I'm one of them. That's why I've taken my time to come down here today. Because we need to do something to fix this before we start, you know, encouraging more of this to go on through different communities. But, and I'm all for that bike trail, I love going down it. But I've got to go there armed because of some of the people that are on it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further comments within the room?
Right, in the room, anyone else like to comment today?
Okay, how about online?
Okay. Yeah, Carmen, go ahead up to the mic if you'd like to speak.
My name is Carmen Deleon, and I'm just saying that we're trying to make a proclamation for the July celebration of July 4th being July month, Independence Month. Because many people, you know, sacrificed their lives for freedom of speech and for the independence of this country. So I would prefer to have it made the way that I read it out yesterday and not forget that this country, if anybody's got a dollar, they can read the dollar. It says "In God We Trust." Because the foundation of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and whatever, Declaration of Independence is all based on biblical stuff. That's why they put in the Day of the Lord, that's why the dollar says "God Bless America." So hopefully we don't forget, you know, that God created the earth, and that's who we owe our allegiance to, is God first, and protecting this earth because we only got one planet. So we got to take care of it. And I forgot, I'm supposed to talk about the proclamation. Okay, I'd like to have it worded the way I had it and not like a sixth grader wrote it because there was really, I didn't get a chance to count, but there was less than 250, and now there's like barely, you know, half of what was written. So I'd like to fix that. And I agree with this guy that whatever he talked about, if I'm allowed to say that, that I agree with what he's saying, that, you know, that if the, whatever, I'm not supposed to name anybody, but you know who you are, if they would do something with the tax money, we could solve the homelessness problem. Because the problem really isn't the homeless people, it's the fact that you can't, you pay $75 for a fee, $75 for a fee, first and last month's rent, nobody can do that. So they want three times the rent. You got to talk to the people renting out homes to lower those, you know, standards of 70. There should be a cap on how much it costs to apply for a place to live. It should be 20 bucks, not 75 bucks for every time you want to move. And you shouldn't have to pay $3,000 to move into an apartment, that's just ridiculous. And then they say, "How do we get homelessness?" Well, we've been priced out. I can't afford to move. I don't know who else. Somebody told me it's easier to put down payment on a house than actually move with all the deposits you got to do for an apartment. That's ridiculous. And that's why I've spoken about how housing should be able to sustain itself with a fireplace, et cetera, et cetera. So anyways, I didn't have anything written. Bye.
Okay, and we do have, it looks like two people online right now. Jackie Lane, please go ahead.
I wanted to talk about the charter amendment for the redistricting committee. This is, looks a lot different than the one we saw previously. And in fact, the thing that was posted this morning is different than what was posted for the public to see a couple of days ago. But the changes are concerning. I don't understand why we need two additional redistricting members, five worked. Also wondering why the change from the parties appointing, giving you a list to choose from. Having watched the council appoint members of various boards and commissions, I do worry about the council's ability to be fair on that, on appointments. And I worry about the council having diverse appointments, because that's not what I've seen, for example, on planning commission and other boards and commissions that you guys are responsible for appointing. I worry that the redistricting master is chosen by the council instead of by the commission. So I'm not sure why these changes have been made. I hope that there will be some more opportunity for the public to weigh in on this. It's a little last minute to let the public see what you're planning to do to our charter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. And if you do have specific suggestions, please send them in right away, either the auditor or the council as a whole.
Okay, and I see one more person. Caller, please state your name and go ahead.
This is Kimberly Gohean Elbin, Patriot Life citizen of Clark County, Washington. Listen to the citizens' counsel and obey. I'm speaking on the minutes of May 29th, for a quick minute here, where the mayor of one of the hundreds of cities across America proclaiming to be sanctuary cities, of Vancouver, was on record for pushing an agenda and in my opinion was rude, forceful, and tyrannical for the record. Also speaking to all this agenda today, all on the agendas in the past and future agendas, to have citizens consider audits and recalls. And the proclamation brought forth, written by myself and Carmen Deleon, this proclamation was edited and unconstitutional reasons were given that satisfy this council but disregard the "we, the people." This will not happen, and I read the original legal proclamation for July as Independence Month, and keep this legal, original that we submitted, it's going to stay original. Whereas in the year of our Lord, 1776, what they edited was "our Lord." People can read this and look it up. "Congress declared its freedom from Great Britain, that these colonies are free and independent states and are absolved from the British Crown. And whereas in the year of our Lord, 1776, Independence Day, will be the most memorable epoch in the history of America, celebrating with parades, guns, bells, bonfires, and illuminations, our fireworks, we need them back in Vancouver, from one end to the continent to the other, and from this time forward forevermore." John Adams wrote that. "And whereas Congress approved the actual Declaration of Independence document on July 4th, 1776, and in September 17th, 1787, drafted in secret by delegates to the Constitutional Convention," that's "we, the people, "during the summer of 1787, established the government of the United States, guaranteeing our right to abolish any government or alter them if they become destructive and institute new government." And, and it carries on from there forth. Keep this original, that is part of the independence, we are guaranteed the right to abolish any government or alter. So I am asking the citizens to listen daily to FM Radio 101.1, listen daily. We have a corrupt system here in our local grassroots government here in Clark County, Washington. God bless all of you for your service, but I'm afraid that you're not actually serving him, the country, the people, or anybody else but yourselves. And I'm asking for the citizens of Clark County to get, to assemble as our forefathers warranted to do when you do become tyrannical. Keep this proclamation as originally written, or we're going to sue you for.
All right, your time is up, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room, last call in the room? Okay, anyone else online?
No, that is all.
Okay, super. Let's go to old business, 4.1, the minutes. All move approval.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, so we'll go to 4.2, Charter Amendments. The first one up is sheriff's salary. Were you going to present on that?
Yes, and I did share this with the sheriff. We'd made one tweak after we discussed, but it was based on our discussion. So the proposed amendment for your feedback, and this would have to go to a public hearing on the 25th, I believe. And Kristen, can you scroll down just a little bit so we can get to where the change is? It's basically, the amendment is in Section 1 of the Charter, which identifies the salary for the sheriff, and it's changing it from that, there's a flat dollar amount from 2014 with an increase based on the Washington State Salary Commission. What is drafted here is 8% higher than the highest step of the under sheriff range. And then basically also, it includes that if there's any salary adjustment to the under sheriff range, like a wage adjustment, it would be applied as well.
So just to be a little bit more specific from my own understanding, are we anticipating the highest step of the under sheriff salary range to be changed on a specific date?
The only time it would be considered is during the annual wage adjustment. So if council approves like a 2%, 3% wage increase for the following year, so it would be effective January 1, then that would also apply to the sheriff's salary. So that's the only time it's usually considered is during the annual wage adjustment.
Okay. Other questions? Sorry, did you have a question?
Yes, I was just wondering, so do we have a, do we have the figure that that would be?
Well, if you look at the top salary for the under sheriff, I believe it's $18,300 a month. And then adding on 8% to that, this is, I just did this, I'm not sure if it's correct, but about $237,000.
Further questions? So at this point, is, I know we're missing one councillor, but do you need a further thumbs up with this change?
It would be helpful, I can get it next week if needed. We will be posting for the public hearing next Tuesday, so we really need to have this solidified by next Wednesday.
Okay, so, but the bottom line with the sheriff, as much as you can pass to us, he was in favor of this amendment?
Yes, he was.
Okay, well, I support the amendment. Is there further support on the council?
I'm supportive, but just to clarify, this will go to the voters and the voters will vote on this.
Correct, yes, this is. It'll be in their hands. Yes, this is the ordinance that will be presented to you in the public hearing, and then that will work with the auditor's office and it'll be on the November ballot.
And just to further clarify, it's the one area in the charter that attracts for a supermajority. So the council will need four votes itself ultimately after the public hearing, correct? To put it before the voters.
We don't need four votes at this moment, though.
No, you don't. I just, we wanted to bring this back for your feedback and to see if we need to make any adjustments before it goes to the public hearing. Great.
And Glenn, do you support the amendment?
I've said before, I think that our elected officials should bring us what they think how the amendment, or how the charter should be changed. They're the experts in that field, so I'm supportive of moving it forward to the public hearing. We'll see what people have to say there and go from there.
Karen?
Yes, I am pleased to see rather than a flat dollar amount, a percentage that makes for future adjustments so that this doesn't go out of date in a year, or two years, or three years, but that it has a life of its own. I think that's a good move.
Okay, thank you. So I think we can move it forward. Now, turning to the next one, redistricting, 4.2. Who is going to present on that?
I will invite the auditor and the PA's office, I did not work on this one. I also do want to just note for the record that, as Ms. Jackie Lane mentioned, this was just posted. We did have the verbiage that was posted, but we just got sent the actual draft ordinance. So we did put the date and time on there, so yes, that is correct. There was other information already posted on there. And then also just wanted to remind council that there is a third one that will be coming back next week on the initiative that you had, and then it just wasn't ready for today. So I just wanted to let you know that as well as the public. So I'll turn it over to our auditor and the PA's office.
Good afternoon councillors, for the record, Greg Kimsey, Clark County Auditor. Appreciate your consideration of this proposed amendment to the Clark County Charter. And as manager Otto said, there was a little bit of confusion in terms of what was posted on your website, what's not posted on the website, so sorry for that. I believe a current resolution, proposed resolution was provided to manager Otto just maybe an hour ago, so that's available to you, I'm sure.
Yes, it's online and it's on their screen too, so thank you.
Wasn't online just a moment ago, but maybe it is now.
I thought we had. Okay, we'll make sure if it's not.
It will be soon, I'm sure. If not now, it will be soon. The question was asked to me, what was, what's different from the current proposal as to what you saw two months ago, three months ago, whenever it was it first came to you? And there's really only three elements. The first is that the committee members are nonpartisan, you would appoint those committee members, which was a suggestion by a council member. Another change is that the number of the committee increases to seven, with six people being appointed by the council, which was another suggestion by another council member. And then the, those are really the only two changes from what you saw. Or, one other change, added language that was, sets forth a goal that the redistricting plan equalizes population within districts with as few changes to existing boundaries as possible. So that's, oh, and places a limit on what the, I think we also changed, we also added, this thing's gone through, you can imagine, multiple, multiple versions. But we also place a limit on what the percentage change that the committee can make to the plan submitted by the redistricting master. Would you like me to kind of summarize what this would do? So the council would appoint six members of the redistricting committee, and you would be doing that earlier than currently set forth in the charter to give the committee time to kind of get going and be prepared to do work when the census information comes out. The six members of the committee would then appoint a chair, who would then have seven members. Those six members would be, again, your appointment, not being selected, the political parties would not be asked to provide names for you to select from, you would do that yourself. The council would then appoint a redistricting master who would be an employee with skills and experience, an employee of the county's GIS department. Establishes deadlines when the committee must appoint the chair, requires the plan to be consistent with requirements set forth in state law. So we added a section in the charter that's the same language that's in state law about redistricting. Specifically, specifically, well, RCW 4405140, I won't read all four of those to you. And then clarifies that the plan created by the redistricting master is subject to amendments by five of the seven members of the committee, and again, within a 2% limitation, which is the same limitation that the council has currently in charter, is the plan that's given to the council. So that's, that's what's being proposed.
So if I could ask right away, did you get a chance to sit down one-on-one with every councillor or only a few of us?
I only sat down with, one-on-one with you. I did send out the entire packet a week ago, week and a half ago, and invited discussions with anyone who had wanted to discuss it.
Okay, so some of these changes are new perhaps to other councillors since?
Yeah, and again, the two specific changes are really the nonpartisan committee members and an increase of, to the seven-person committee. Those are the, and then also the, the one, one additional change is the, the plan has to equalize population within districts with as few changes to existing boundaries as possible, which is surprising, I think, to all of us that that's not in state law.
So questions of council, if you've had a sufficient chance to read through?
The version I sent out last week is the version I just described.
So if there's questions?
Yes.
Chair, I don't really have a question, but I'd like to just hear some discussion. Sometimes when we increase the number of members to a large, as large a number as seven, for a committee that has to make very precise decisions, it gets more difficult because of the increase in membership. Could we just discuss that for a minute? Why, why seven? Why not five? Why not, you know, why increase it? What are the thoughts?
If I could answer that, because I may have been the genesis of changing that. I, in my view, when we, when we knew it was going to go to a redistricting committee at a time when the census material was late, we were in a pandemic, the state changes were late, and then we had a charter review committee that was proposing adding a new district and changing everything around. It was a perfect storm. And looking at the language in the charter of five people basically requiring a supermajority, it was pretty much black and white that this was never going to pass. And it didn't. It came to the council and the council had to go through the process of doing it ourselves. So the thought process was, well, you could just make it not a supermajority, just make a simple majority. And that would certainly simplify it, but quite frankly, I think that would have had a very poor result last time. So in keeping, it's not as strong a supermajority, but still a supermajority, but increasing the numbers of membership, I think was just going to level the playing field a little bit more, especially in light of the fact, this is going to be nonpartisan, the selection process will be a lot different. We're not going to be going to the Democrats or the Republican parties to give us their nominations. So I thought it was a happy medium. It was a way forward to improve what would have been gridlock if we kept it the way it was, and would have had some untoward results if it was just five members and only required a simple majority. So that was my thought process in wanting to see a change.
And realizing that we won't have that perfect storm again, in light of it being a more normal process in the future, hopefully, do you still see that seven is the best number, Gary? Chair, I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry, was that to Greg or to me? That was to me, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. I didn't, I didn't want a larger number because we go through quite a bit of work that the public doesn't know of, when we even slept one person for a committee, or three people for a committee, or the brand-new committee, like the one you're suggesting on disabilities. So I didn't want to get larger than seven. I thought that was a good, good number. And it, the other change was, we're making it mandatory to go to GIS professional staff member, which I think is, just makes perfect common sense to make up.
I agree. Yeah.
Just a couple things. I would be curious on what your thoughts are on the five versus seven? That'd be my first question.
I'm neutral on that, frankly.
Okay.
I see advantages either way, I don't have a strong opinion.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Sure. Then the other thing, so, you know, the nonpartisan, I think the best thing that we did for our county is go to nonpartisan elections. I struggle a little bit with the process that I'm seeing in front of me, and correct me if I'm wrong, and that would be that the existing council would just select those individuals. The problem that I foresee with that is that you get like-mindedness to the existing council, and so there's not really much of a check and a balance. I don't know if the current partisan way is the best way of going about it, but I see value in the members not being selected by the council and being in a more fair process, but I'm open to your thoughts on that as well.
Well, again, I'm, I'm neutral. I don't have a, I can, again, argue both sides of that. I guess I can put a word in favor of the proposal that's currently sitting in front of you by, by saying that the five council members are elected by the public, and they've placed their faith in you, their confidence in your decision-making, and I think we would have confidence that you would select, you know, you or future councils would select six reasonable people to do this work. But I, again, I'm, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other on either of those issues. The number of committee members are how the people are selected.
I have a couple of questions. Yeah, I had questions as well about increasing it to seven, because, and I'm not sure if being able to achieve three out of five versus five out of seven, how much difference that really makes. So I had questions about that. And I imagine there would be some sort of appli- about that. And I imagine, uh, there would be some sort of application process that the council, we could decide what that process is, so that it could be open to, uh, the entire public, uh, to apply, to participate in this, and there would be no stopping, uh, Republicans or Democrats from, uh, putting themselves forward or other people forward. So, I kind of feel the same way you do, is I'm not quite sure what the difference that that would make. Uh, but I do think that it's very important to have that, uh, redistricting master. And there, and as I understand it, there could be no changes to what the redistricting master proposes unless there's that supermajority, and failing that, there's no changes. So, ultimately, if, uh, then that's not successful, we would get, the council would get the, uh, redistricting master's proposal, and then it would be on us if we wanted to change that and to arrive at that supermajority.
Subject to, uh, subject to limitations on the amendments at both levels.
Right, right. Good. Uh, I think that's all I had.
Yeah, so the internal process for the selection would be something we would generate for procedural rules. Uh, Karen, did you have any, uh, questions?
No, no further. I, thank you.
So, um, we're gonna go through the same process of putting, will it be on the same date as the others?
Yes, we're gonna have a hearing for all three on the 25th, I believe.
Yeah, and then just, I know it's a personal opinion, but it was also the vote of the people to change all these positions to nonpartisan. From my personal opinion, I don't know what it changed at all. Uh, what it tried to solve, um, most of the narrative behind the change really pointed to what was happening nationally, not locally. Um, but in any case, it was the will of the people. They put it in place, so, um, you know, the last time we were kind of in-between laws, as far as how the selection of county members, and, uh, it was kind of a mess, switching from partisan to nonpartisan. But, in any case, so, uh, thumbs up, still on moving forward with this amendment?
Yeah, uh, my thumb is up, and I think the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on all of the ones that are proposed, so, great.
Thank you, Karen. And Glenn, were you in favor of moving forward? Okay, so still a lot of process. Thank you for your hard work on this. It, it will end up better as long as we can put it before the people, and they agree. Okay, 4.3, the mental health sales tax.
So, if I could start, Chair. Um, so this is regarding the bridge shelter and the direction that council provided us to go look at our six-year forecast for the mental health sales tax. If I can share some insights before, um, and maybe provide a recommendation for council's consideration first. Um, I will say our staff have worked on this tirelessly since last week to get this in front of council as soon as possible. And what we found as going through the process is, we do, there are a lot of needs in the community, both internally in the county, such as our jail, and how we're gonna provide services in there today, as well as in the future, um, as well as, and I know some councillors and others have been actively engaged with community partners, school districts. There's a lot of need. And I think this is the first time since I've been here, um, that we, our needs may be exceeding the money that we have. And that became evident during the review, especially with the six-year forecast. Just looking at a potential, like, snippet of just the jail needs really could reduce if council approves this moving forward. So, we're more than happy to share a very preliminary draft, very draft, because we, in the normal process, this gets vetted, all the proposals get vetted, to make sure it meets the requirements identified in the RCW, um, that we have the existing funds, and it's validated. None of that has been able to happen, because we're rushing this. Um, and I also want to make it clear, I have heard nothing but support from every councillor. There's been no councillor that said, "We're not supportive, we don't like this, we don't think it's needed." It was, "How can we partner, and how can we move forward?" Uh, with that said, I would respectfully ask council to consider going through the normal mental health sales tax process. I think, um, as we really dug into this over the last week, there is a need, and there's a lot of still unknowns. And, you know, that process does allow proposals to be vetted, to make sure the details are there, to say, you know, yes, it does fit within the guidelines. Um, it also allows us to see all the needs, so council can make that, that, or I would say the advisory group to council can provide that, that holistic view of what is the best thing for the community, and you're getting the biggest bang for your buck, and that you actually can see all the proposals. So, um, we're happy to show the very preliminary, not final, um, six-year forecast, uh, not vetted, um, but I, that, I think that's something I, I would like council to consider, just to take a pause. And I don't want to have a misstep, and I don't want to have, put you all in a position to miss an opportunity that you may not know about yet because you, it hasn't come before you. So, I'll turn back to the council, and I, I don't think I have Michael here or anybody. Um, I know Emily's online, I'm, but, happy to discuss.
So, the first question I would ask, number one, I know Michelle's not here. Were you able with the finance team to go over those numbers with each and every councillor during the one-on-ones?
Yes.
Earlier this week?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone has that same information?
That is correct, yes.
Uh, so, thanks for that characterization. I think it was, uh, very accurate, and I just want to echo a couple of points. One, it's something we've been talking about, or at least I've been talking about with different community partners for years. It is something I still support. Um, when we look at congregate shelter, which isn't the most popular choice, it isn't the most, uh, effective in returning people to a house condition, but it's certainly better, uh, than some of the alternatives out on the street. And it's a way to offer shelter and to a, a, a much larger number. Uh, but one of the, um, benefits of the congregate shelter is the scale, the economy of scale, and the, in expense of it. Um, looking at the numbers that we have so far, and part of the problem, with all due respect to how this was presented to us, it's, uh, the information is pretty scant. But, the numbers don't reflect any economy of scale, as far as I can see. I mean, it's, especially in light of what was in the paper today on, um, proposed deficits for the city, um, which isn't our business necessarily, but I don't want to partner in something that would make that situation even worse. And the email from the manager, our city administrator, that essentially, um, said even with our funding, if we were to come up with the funding ask as it is, they still are falling short of funding, which is, they're gonna have to go back to the taxpayer at a time when they're already looking at a $42 million deficit. Um, and I'm looking for the, the data. I just, I did some fast math before, and for some reason, I'm not finding that piece of paper. Roughly, it's about $53,000 per bed. If you take the capital costs of 16 million and amortize it over 10 years, which is the expected, at least the notional expected duration of it, you know, that's an annual cost of $1.6 million. And then you look at the operation and maintenance, 6.5 million plus, and it's, as, um, was mentioned to us, those numbers would go, go higher over time. Uh, it comes out literally between the operation and maintenance and capital outlay of about $53,000 per bed. So, I don't see it as an economy of scale. I don't see it as a cost-efficient plan. Um, but aside from the money, you know, I, I, if we put it into a normal pragmatic, physically responsible process, which is what you're asking, and what our staff certainly asks, I think that gives the city more time to flesh out the details. Uh, we don't know what Columbia, I understand that Columbia Mental Health, Columbia River Mental Health was gonna be providing the, uh, professional services. I have no idea what that looks like right now. And if we're gonna be paying a port, good portion of it, I would want to know what that would look like. Uh, to the greater conversation, we had, and I, amongst others, been really pushing hard on this mental health sales tax to get this money out to the community. We have been working on other very significant priorities for quite some time. The first and foremost was the jail. Uh, addiction services and mental health services to get, do the goal of becoming a licensed facility, which, by the way, would impact the homeless population, because many of those that find themselves in our jail are also homeless, and it, so it would be, uh, a benefit for that population. But that's gonna be, and we just started to see the numbers associated with that, and roughly $5.5 million operations every year to get started. Uh, and then additionally, our, especially because of the pandemic, uh, our schools, our children, and our community have been very hard-hit, and they have been really asking for counseling help. I'm not talking about vocational help, I'm not talking about school counselors to tell them what classes to take. I'm talking about mental health support within the schools. So, uh, and the other, the, oh, EST 112 was telling us that they had, they're losing state funding for about 30 councillors. So, even with the counseling as it is right now, it's woefully under-resourced. So, we were trying to work with the school superintendents to come up with a way forward to use the mental health sales tax to, one, replace those 30, uh, that the state is defunding, uh, but also increase the capacity with our, with our children. And that's during school hours, homeschool, after-school hours. So, I mean, in a perfect world, if we could find, like a Columbia River Mental Health program, that we could invest heavily in, and they had the capacity to deliver services at a congregate site, uh, for our schoolchildren, uh, for our, uh, jailed inmates, both in and out, jail alternatives. Uh, I mean, we need economy of scale, we need efficiency, and we don't, we have a finite number of professional providers out there. You know, Outsiders Inn does a great job of supervising sites and providing care at a facility, basically peer-to-peer. Um, but that's not the kind of professional help, uh, that the mental health sales tax fund was, uh, anticipated. And it, it does have legal parameters around it that we would be audited on. So, anyway, I, I'm, I want to see this, with, to move forward, I want to see constant attention. I want to see if we can expedite it when, in every, any way we can, uh, through the normal process. Um, so, I guess I kind of agree with, uh, what you're proposing, Kathleen. It's not that I want to put a stop to this, I want to make it work. Uh, and right now, it's kind of not ready for primetime. Other comments?
So, Chair, I do have comments.
Please, go ahead.
Um, first of all, Kathleen, I know that it's not your usual way to, uh, suggest exactly what you see as the path forward, uh, for council, and in this particular case, it is based on the research of the staff, and for that, I thank you, and, most importantly, I completely agree with what you're saying for a variety of reasons. One is, and this is interesting to me, um, coming to this conclusion, as I do now, I've come full circle, because this is where I started. I did not have a good feeling initially about not knowing the dollar volume that the jails would be proposing, that the schools would be proposing, and who knows what other meritorious proposals might come forward. And without that knowledge, I felt that it was really quite premature to, uh, move forward with, uh, such a hefty, um, uh, a, a program just right off the bat. And so, that's why I've, I've come, uh, full circle. Um, and the other thing is, that is of concern to me, I have not yet seen in the $2 million per year increasing, exactly how that money would be spent. And I would want assurance from, um, our finance team that those expenditures really would qualify for the mental health sales tax. Not knowing exactly what is proposed here, I'm, you know, we have no way of knowing for sure whether they would or not. Now, if we committed to a dollar amount, and then it weren't eligible for the mental health sales tax, I think we'd find ourselves in a, in a pickle, because we'd, uh, and, we don't have that money in general fund. It's just not there. So, um, I think we need to understand, I know we need to understand more of the detail of the proposal, uh, before we would go forward. So, my, my third, uh, point is, I, I think more for Leslie, and that is, if we were to go forward, and I'd like to propose that we do, in the way that is suggested here, uh, how do we do that? Do we not need to undo something that was, uh, action taken at our last meeting? Or Kathleen, either one?
Yeah, I, I would, unless they can correct me. So, at the last meeting, um, the prior motion was rescinded, so the only direction from council was to review the six-year forecast. So, I don't think there was anything else on the table that, um, would lead to a further action.
Okay, and that, thank you, and that six-year forecast...
My understanding as well.
I'm sorry?
Uh, I'm sorry, Nitra, this is Leslie Lopez, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, great. So, that six-year forecast has come forward, I appreciate it, and I was concerned by what it showed. So, uh, given that, um, I just would not give a thumbs up to proceeding with the proposal at this point in time.
Okay, I, I misunderstood, because I thought you were saying you agreed with the proposal, but moving forward to a normal process...
I'm saying the proposal that Kathleen Otto and I discussed, uh, as supporting. Not, not...
She's supportive of the recommendation that I provided.
Yeah, not the proposal from the city at this time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Glenn?
Yep, got a few comments. Um, you know, we mentioned price, and 53,000 a bed is crazy. It's, there's no question about it. But I look at the cost of...
Actually, 54.
54. You know, what's, what's the cost of, of, uh, low-income housing? Right now, it's around 600,000 a door, and that doesn't have any services counted with that. So, it still is a very significant discount versus permanent housing. Um, you know, the, we, just a few months ago, we, we approved 1.8 million for hotel vouchers with very, very scant information, with no information on what exactly the, the, uh, mental health services that would be attached to that, and how they would work, or who they, who would do that. Um, and, you know, we're talking about making it, you know, making a recommendation to move today on this, or at some point in the future, but the reality is, we're years behind. This should have been done years ago. And so, there is great haste to this, because the individuals that are out there continually increase in the difficulties that they're facing, and it becomes more and more expensive and difficult to get those people back. Um, this is our chance to make a difference, and many of us, if not all of us, were elected with the promise that we were going to deal with the whole... with the homelessness. We have a chance here, 150 people to remove from the streets, 150, to get them sheltered, to give them stabilization, to get them the resources that they need to start that path towards improving their lives. And at the same time, we're able to help clean up our county. You know, if we continue going forward with the way that we're doing things today, we're going to end up with the same results. I really feel like this is our chance to make a stand, to make a difference. And, and I understand, I, you've heard me very vocally supporting the jail and all the services that need to be available there. But quite frankly, a large percentage of the people that are exiting jail are exiting into homelessness. And if we go and through the extent and the high cost of providing treatment, mental health services in the jail, that is absolutely wonderful, but if they exit onto the street, it will be a waste of money. It will not be effective. And I understand there are constraints on this fund. I understand there are more needs than there are there, that there are funds available for, but I think we need to take action at this point. We need to show the city that we're willing to partner on this so that they can move forward. The last thing we need is no shelter. That is the worst thing that we could experience right now, is no shelter, and the problem will continue to grow. So again, I think the, the time to take action is right now.
Sue?
I think the county manager had a comment.
Oh, I just wanted to, I was just asking Jordan about the timeline for the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board. So the RFP submissions right now is due August 13th, so it's just a couple months out. And then it follows through our budget process. The notices go out in November of this year. So I just wanted to make sure that council knew the timing of that process moving forward.
That's exactly what I was going to ask, so thank you for that. I, I'm supportive of this project. I'd like to see this project move forward. I'd really like to see the county partner with the city in a, and be collaborative, not just on this, but in many other projects moving forward. I feel like this project in particular has suffered because it, in thinking of how I would have liked to see this play out, I would have liked to have had a conversation about, we have this great idea, it'd be great for the county to come in and partner with us, this is what we think, you know, just general parameters, and we could have said, we like this idea too. Each of our staffs could have gone, worked out all of the details, come back, be able to answer all of our questions. That, that didn't happen. And as much as this is needed, and we all are supportive of it, there's still been questions and there's been contradictory information provided. So it hasn't, it has had made, has slowed down the process just in trying to speed it up. So I think that we're very close to that grant-making process. And I know at June 10th, the, we'll know more of what the city is proposing. And I wouldn't mind speeding it up if we had all of the information in front of us. And it, you know, that could be a possibility as we all move forward with this. But we, we need to have, we need to know exactly how much money we have available. And I appreciate that there, not all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed on this. It's hard to get everything exactly laid out and, and still take advantage of your opportunities. So I feel very frustrated about how this has played out because I do think that we are all supportive of this. And it's not clear to me if there's a delay of a month or two, if that means the project does not work at all. I'd, I'd just like to better understand it. But, but I would, I wouldn't eliminate the prospect of speeding things up or taking it out of that process if we felt confident in what was being proposed. So I guess that's, but I'd be very supportive of us continuing to work on this with the city.
Thank you for all that, and I think you were spot on. It's very difficult to partner when you're not treated as a partner. And, and so that needs to change. I mean, we need to be on the ground floor before there are emergency declarations, before there are projects like this, so that we can work through the details. And to Glenn's point, I want to just say, number one, you know, we spend 10 to 15 million dollars every year, and in great measure, on shelter space. So it's not like we're not going to, we're going to stop all shelter space, we're not going to do that. We're going to continue and look for opportunities. And hopefully, this one will pan out. The other part of this is, you know, part of the funding, which is not complete, even if we give, I just want to hit that again, even if we hit the county, city with all the money that they're requesting, they are still short funds. And part of the downside, you get to affordable housing, and I'm just going to read from the manager's email, every capital dollar, and this is referring to SHB 1406 funds, which is part, a big part of the funding, every capital dollar from restricted funds that goes into this, meaning the bridge project, also reduces the amount of new affordable housing that can be built. So it, everything's a trade-off, I understand that priority-wise, but that kind of undermines the purpose of 1406 and diverts it from affordable housing to a congregate shelter. So I think we've gotten three to continue to move forward, but, but put it back into the RFP process.
Sheriff, I could just make a comment real quickly. I'm not trying to sway, I think there's a clear direction that the council wants to go, but I just wanted to say something real quick about communication, and it's tricky. And I will say that I, I watched Battleground City Council meeting last night because of some, yeah, some drama that took place there that was really sad to watch unfold. But interestingly, right after the drama was over, I saw Kevin Tyler presenting to their council on what we had, in my opinion, made great measure and great lengths towards communication. And their council derided us for horrible communication. So even though you can have the, the best of intentions, the best intent only goes so far when you don't see and you don't know all of the different things that are happening. So I just wanted to point that out, that I felt like we did a, a good job with communication. They took it the opposite way. So just when we're thinking about communicating back and forth between jurisdictions, it's important to try to maintain the spirit of collaboration and not focus on what may or may not have happened.
So you piqued my interest. What are we talking about? What happened at Battleground? And any communication, even if it's poor, is at least communication. You know, we created a joint board between Vancouver and Clark County on homeless issues. And then we enlarged it, included all, all the cities, and called it Echo. Zero discussion, even at Echo. We provided an additional conduit of communication. However poor the communication could have been, it didn't occur at all. So I, you, you can hold the thought on Battleground, you can fill me in later, but, but there has to be communication, we have to be treated as a partner. We still have the homeless action plan, we're doing everything we can to move forward, but we, we need to be part of the process. There has to be a process. Anyway, any further thoughts? Otherwise, Sue?
Well, just to clarify, I would, I would support continuing talking about this with the city of Vancouver. And if things are clarified, if there seems like a clear pathway forward, I would, I would welcome this coming back to us to consider more quickly than going through the grant process. And, and if, if that doesn't work, then let's go through the grant process.
And if I can, first I want to say thank you for the discussion. And again, no councillor or staff is saying that this isn't a good idea. And on the communication piece, and you know, I called Eric a little earlier today too, briefly, but, and I think councillor Marshall touched on this, our community services didn't know anything about this. So the collaboration is really important. It's like bring the people who have the expertise, who share the same vision with staff, have that discussion, and then that could, they could, you know, it's an opportunity for us to figure it out and then bring it to council for, you know, consideration and stuff. So we want that. I think, you know, everybody wants that. This is hard when you're trying to catch up and figure out what's going on, and then it changes, and then it changes. So I think everybody's on the same page, and I hope that that is the takeaway, both with our council and staff and the city and their staff. We all want this, and we're all supportive. And we, we need to stop saying we want to collaborate and we need to do it. Like I said, I don't have a problem, I called Eric today. He's, he's always been very great with me, but it just seemed like there was something, I don't know how it transpired completely, but it's, it's definitely messy, but this is when we're going to have a mess up and we're going to make mistakes, which is not going to be successful for the program, the county, the city. So I would just still offer that suggestion to staff, call your counterparts at, between us. That's the only way we're going to get this moving forward.
Are we sure that there was no communication to community services? Is that, I really struggle to?
Well, I believe I had a message from the director saying, hey, have you gotten, received something? Because they heard about it, and I sent it to them. So I, there was no communication with me until right before the letter was sent, other than a councillor asking eligible funding for a bridge shelter.
I think it's safe to say, we're not going to have like a congressional hearing on just, you know, who knew what went. But the, the bottom line message is, we need to do better and work together on this. And hopefully, and I, I agree with Sue, I'm hoping that we can continue on. I will tell you that I very briefly talked to the mayor yesterday to give her a heads-up after I'd gotten the emails from Merrick Homes. I said, geez, we've got some problems here. And I know they want to meet and talk, so I'm hoping that we can, between managers and city administrators and staff, between the offices of Jamie Spinelli and Vanessa Gasson, that we can get, sort through these details and get the answers that, that we need so we can move forward on a more expedited way. I mean, it's just prudent. So anything further at this point?
No, I, I appreciate it. And, you know, it might be an opportunity, I can talk to Vanessa and Michael and Budget to see, you know, if there's updates at Echo or other opportunities where we can continue that discussion.
Okay, let's move on then to 4.4, ARPA Fund Update, which also may impact some of the discussions. And are we hearing from finance? Who's leading this off?
I'm not sure if Mark is on, or if, I see Laura. I believe that they have an update on what has been spent. There's been some money that has been returned or may be returned for additional consideration.
Mark, are you summarizing this slide? Emily?
I don't see Mark on, a minute ago. I see Laura on. So maybe we want to continue on to the next item, and then when Mark gets here, we can come back to it.
He was on.
Okay, well, I see the bottom line of 1.16 uncommitted. I don't know if that's that rollover from the lesser amount that Comcast needed on that allocation, but I think there should be some discussion of where that 1.16 million goes. I, I don't hear anybody online that's able to present, but, I mean, I, I'd like to repurpose that money, and maybe that's something that could go to either the schools, or the jail, or the bridge proposal.
Yeah, so I would recommend going on to another agenda item, and we'll come back and have that discussion because I don't see Mark on, I just texted him.
All right, I'll circle that, and we'll come back to 4.4.
Good afternoon, councillors. For the record, Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst. So we have gotten a request from the city of Vancouver for a letter of support from the county regarding a proposed trail that they're trying to do. One of the public comments earlier was, was related to this. They are seeking grant funding for preliminary design and planning purposes for a trail along northeast 18th Street and the power line there. So if you think about how the Burnt Bridge Creek Trail is constructed where, you know, there's some green space, there is the main kind of power line running through the city, you've got the creek, and then you've got the trail there where folks can access that. They would propose basically continuing that trail down to the east, terminating close to the Harmony Sports Complex there off of 192nd. And then I, 192nd?
You're talking about Harmony?
Yeah, the sports field there. Uh, yeah, you can see here on the map, that's probably a, a more helpful way to, to show you there. And then this planning process, the letter of support they're requesting is for funding to support this orange section in the middle. That is what they'd like to be planning for. There is anticipation that through this planning process, they may try to figure out a way to connect to the Lacamas Heritage Trail. I think the goal would be to eventually have a unified trail system, you know, that connects through the whole of the city and then out into Camas. And I think that there may be a bit there in the, in the dotted area that might be part of the unincorporated, not looking at the map specifically. But, so this is in order to do public engagement, provide some design alternatives, and then also start looking at options around access and parking, because obviously, that's going to be a major consideration in the design process for a trail like this. And so happy to take any questions from council.
Questions of council?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Today, we heard testimony regarding the terrible shape in which this property is right now. And in fact, it was dubbed a haven for chaos, which I thought was quite descriptive. What, what is the situation there? And how would that impact design and planning for a trail?
Well, councillor, so the, the comment earlier, I think, was mostly around the, the Burnt Bridge Creek Trail and some of the encampments that are there just off of, I think that's 86th Street. I actually live near there, I, I run on the trail all the time, I do run past the encampment, so I'm, I'm very familiar. Obviously, that, that is a challenge, and I, you know, I'm sure that's something that the city would need to consider with any kind of trail project that they are putting in. I think some of those issues would likely come up since this is the planning and design phase that they're seeking funding for. So I would hope that that would be part of the, the process, discussing, you know, the design and planning, that, that would be something that would be in consideration as
So let me highlight what I had talked to Jordan about. One, we need trails. The more trails we can have, the better. And this ultimately is a good idea. The issues I had with, one, with the homeless, and that's ongoing cleanup, they come back, cleanup, they come back, cleanup. And I, and I was just talking with the HART team out at the cleanup that was ongoing this morning. And we talked a little bit about Burnt Bridge, and evidently, there was a recent cleanup there. So, I mean, that's an ongoing challenge. But if you, if you create these trails and then put more emphasis and come up with more capacity for eliminating encampments, you know, the introduction of, of a recreation space, I think... space, I think will eliminate the problem to some extent. We also just, and I think it's in the county area, there's a street just south of, right in that corridor that's completely overrun with RVs, buses, encamp, there's an encampment there. That's on, I think, I think that's outside the city limits. And that would cause, I mean, that, it's scary for people to walk through those areas. So aside from the homeless issue, I'm mostly concerned and had most of my questions on the Lackamas Meadows area because of the trailhead that we had there, which gets pretty crowded, especially on a hot day, and traffic backs up onto the, onto the street, creating a dangerous situation. They're planning on connecting there, and that, there's so much development going on there. And there's a big warehouse being built right now. Camas has the North Shore Development occurring. There's a commercial area right next to the warehouse. And now, and we have in community development, a proposal to a residential development just north of there along the Meadow. So it's going to be a high congestion area already, and then you have a protected space. We've been conserving as much of the Meadow as we can. And the dotted line that I saw went right through the Meadow. And I'm thinking, well, is that trail going to be compatible with the conservation efforts that we have there? I'm not saying it won't be. It could be. We don't want to love any area to death. But anyway, those, those were my questions, but I think you satisfied all of them by simply saying this is really preliminary planning. So I'm supportive of the, to get this preliminary planning going and help the city with the letter, knowing that we have these concerns, and some of them belong to us, if that street is in county property and has all those RVs. That's been a habitual problem there for years. Anyway, that's, those are my thoughts. I'm in support of it. Sue?
Thank you. Yeah, as I was looking at the map, it looks like there are some sections that are in the county and predominantly in the city though, but maybe this could be one of those projects we collaborate with the city on, on cleanup efforts in, along the entire trail. I like this project because I think it could really provide commuter multimodal transportation and, and connect. And even though some of those dots, there are issues to work out in the future. There's another jurisdiction that we'll be working on that. And then also, I'm aware that the Columbia River Salmon Partnership is planning a project for the Burnt Bridge Lake area that's just right down there on lake shore to reconnect with the floodplain. So that could be a really much needed, beautiful part of this whole project. But I, I'm supportive. I think it's a good project and connects some important dots.
I just want to, on the lower Columbia Fish Board, it was prior to your time, but there are ongoing restorative efforts on the Burnt Creek Trail as part of the recovery process that's been working out.
Yeah, the Burnt Bridge Trail is a remarkable trail. It's, it's a, it's a great asset for us, so we, we need to do everything we can to protect it.
So other comments?
Yes, first of all, I'm very supportive of this. I think it does a lot of things. One is it gives people an opportunity to travel from one side of this, actually to multiple cities and to do so safely, not having to contend with vehicle traffic. So I think that it provides a major safety factor. I have to point out the irony with this, though. I mean, they are asking for funding prior to having all of the details fully fleshed out, and this is just the conversation that we just went through. That is what the city needs to do. You can't bake the plan fully before you've tried to arrange your funding. So I had to point that out, that and the homelessness.
It's a planning, it's a planning grant.
Yeah.
And they're asking for a letter of support.
Yes, it is still asking for funding before the, the details are fully baked. But that aside, I'm definitely supportive, happy to sign on in support of the, of the request.
Are you okay with that, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, super unanimous.
Thank you, council.
So.
Mark is on now.
He is now. Okay, so we'll go back to 4.4. Mark, you were going to present ARPA funding. Thanks, Oliver. Mark Gatsway, are you there?
Yep.
Yep, there you are.
Can you hear me is the important.
Yes.
Yes. So, sorry, I, I just got busy and I didn't get to it. This is the updated commitment slide that you're familiar with. You've seen it over the, over the past few years. Right now, we have scrubbed all of the ARPA projects that are currently in process or some that have been completed at this point. We have just over a million dollars in uncommitted funding. The plan would be to do a similar process that has been done in the past. We would ask departments to submit staff reports with requests. We would vet those for eligibility, and then they would in turn go to council for your consideration and prioritization. That information has been given to the departments at this point, so I would anticipate by the end of next week, we would have those requests sent to the Otter's Office, and shortly thereafter, we will vet those for eligibility and be able to have a conversation with council about your priorities.
So I have some questions just off the cuff. I kind of disagree with that process, but we'll get to that in a minute. So the 1.16 million, does that include the savings on the Comcast earmark?
Yes.
What we set aside for the Comcast contract? So the vast majority of that 1.16 is that savings from that contract?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, and on the line where, and I'll just point this out, we, you know, on average, we've spent about $10 million on homeless funding. This ARPA Monday, money of 15-plus million dollars was supposed to be direct impact in addition to. And so I was pretty disappointed on how it just kind of all got absorbed without seeing any specific outcomes. Now, I see that we have 2.56, if I'm reading that correctly, 2.56 million remaining. And typically, when I've asked that question, community services would say, yeah, but we've already got it spent. Is that some money that we could repurpose right now? That 2.56 million? Do you know?
I, I can't speak for community services, but I would, I would say that they've already programmed that. It's already in contracts committed to be spent this year.
Yeah, so that's, I just bring that to the attention of other councillors, because I was, I mean, right away, we had allocated $5 million just to shelter space. Where did it go? I know we increased some shelter space, but we didn't buy any hotels with that money. And so this, this was an initiative that I really pushed, that I was really very disappointed in. It just kind of got allocated against existing contracts and outgoing expenditures. So I don't know, have we spent $25 million over the last year? And, you know, this 15 plus the normal 10 or 15? I mean, this is kind of opaque, opaque to me and disappointing. So as to my comment before, we, if we have 1.16 million dollars, quite frankly, as a, as a council, I'd like to direct it right now and say, you know, we're going to put it either to jail services and their remodeling project, or we're going to put it towards the bridge project. I don't know that we have to go countywide search because what we're going to get back is about a $10 million request from, you know, a million here, 500,000 here from the different departments. So I don't know if that, that's a good process with only 1.16 million dollars left, but I'll leave that up to the other councillors. Comments, questions?
I have one question related to the community grant program. That 1.08 remaining, are there, is it expected that all of those community grants will fully spend all that they requested? Have some not been able to actualize what they initially proposed?
Yes, you're, to answer your question, all of the community grants have been completed or under contract except for one, which did not respond. We're still working with one to get their final documentation. However, all of that is anticipated to be, to be spent by the end of this year. So it, all of the grants that were granted are either under contract or we're completing those contracts, and then we can send out the money.
How, how much was that just hasn't been responsive?
The one that wasn't responsive?
Yes, I wonder how much that is.
I would have to check and see. It was, I believe, relatively small, one, maybe $80,000 or something. It wasn't one of the large ones.
Got it.
And I just, I just want to note too, that the, the money from the Comcast contract, while that is what has been proposed and agreed upon, council hasn't approved that contract yet. Right. Just in case something happens, that contract has not gone before council. They're still working through a different language on something, but so while it's showing as available, it's not available in my mind until we sign the contract.
When do we anticipate that? The, the last year?
Jordan, Jordan is hoping for the 18th, but I think he's been hoping for the last six months.
So it's only been about a year and a half in process. The good news is it went down a million dollars instead of going way up, although Comcast had promised to cover any increased costs because of inflation.
Yeah, and, and I just got a, I just got a note from Laura that the, the one contract that we couldn't get the information or did not respond to their award was, it was $95,000.
Thank you.
Glenn or Karen, questions? Comments?
Mark, I, I love spreadsheets too, and I'm just wondering if we clicked on one of these lines, like say for instance, housing the unhoused, if we would get an itemized list of the projects that comprise the 15.5 million?
What, for that one in particular, I would request, there is a list, but I would request that community services actually comes to speak to you about that themselves. Although we administer the grant and the, and the dollars involved, we're not involved with that particular project in the detail.
Okay.
I can tell you a lot about community grants, but that, but those grants I'm not as familiar with.
How bad for some of these other line items?
Again, each of those, each of those line items has, there's a lot of detail behind those. If you would like more detail, we'd be happy to provide it. Or we could request those departments to provide that to you.
That's kind of what I'm hearing from our chair. Am I correct, Gary, on that?
I'm sorry, are you correct on what was?
Are you interested in finding out what programs comprise, say for instance, the 15.5 committed to housing the unhoused?
Yeah, over the years, I've already been getting that information. And there, I will tell you, from my point of view, some of the projects they said were new and added existed before we ever heard of ARPA money. So yes, I've already had staff come back to me because I was, when, we had just approved it, and I was looking for, in fact, I was looking to partner with Vancouver to buy pods for their safe stays. And so I immediately went and said, hey, why don't we spend some of this money on infrastructure for these safe stays? The answer I got was it's already been spent. And I'm like, what? When did we buy a hotel? Where did it go? And then, so I did get a list, and it was Bertha's and Bertha's Two, and they were all projects that had been going on for years and in the pipeline for years. So I would just, I'm just expressing my disappointment because I thought that 15 million quick infusion would really tamp down and have a dramatic impact on our homeless situation, and it didn't. It's just kind of business as usual. Anyway, so I don't need anything further on it. I mean, it's, it's already happened, but we, but we do have 2.56 that hasn't been cashed yet, or hasn't, it may be committed, but I don't, you know, I did government contracting for a while, and, you know, we, we often could repurpose until the money was actually expended, because we had the convenience of termination for the convenience of the government. I don't know where that money sits, but I've always been told that it's already accounted for, even though it, it shows still remaining. I've never fully understood that, Mark, but.
So my understanding, my understanding is that it's under contract, and because a lot of those contracts are reimbursable contracts, each month they send the county invoices, and then we are able to pay that out. So we're under contract with service providers. So I, I don't know how contracting works or your experience in contracting, but I would, I would hesitate to break a contract that we've already signed, so.
So can I just ask the council, did they agree with the process that Mark's outlined to just get information requests internally from all the departments? Or do you want to say, hey, we're going to, we're going to earmark it for schools? We're going to earmark it for shelter? We're going to earmark it for the jail? I mean, do you want to just do a different process or do what's already been outlined? Chair? Please.
I, at this point, I think the best path forward would be to find what it is that we want to support and put it towards that. So if that be a bridge shelter, if that be schools, whatever that ends up being, I think that it's money that's repurposed that, not that it would be misspent or not needed for the purpose used, but it'll just kind of disappear in another way. I would rather us be able to use it for something that we know that the community really needs at this point in time.
Okay, thanks for that.
So I, I just want to ask, do you want to have that discussion after you see any internal requests? So I'm only thinking, I mean, there's obviously jail may have something, I don't know, but one that I know will want to come forward, and I just, is the PA's office. Has their contract ended this year, which I believe is tied, Mark, to 11 stopping?
Correct.
11 FTEs? So after, the end of this year, they do not have funding for 11 FTEs. So I, and I know, I think if we committed this year and fully spent, we will not leave any money on the table, but I don't know if council wants to hear other requests at the same time, you know, like whether it's next week or the following week of saying, okay, here's what staff has brought forward or elected, and then you can dedicate to bridge shelter, schools, whatever you choose at that.
The process that Mark has underway seems to be a good one, a simple one. Let's hear what comes forward, and then we can make our decision. I'm curious about the broadband expansion line, noting that it's 3.65 committed and 3.65 remaining. Why is that not 2.65 remaining?
And, and that's because exactly what Kathleen said. Kathleen, it's not under a signed contract yet. It's been negotiated, we're just waiting for the signed contract.
And the number has already been reduced, Council Bowerman, so the savings was already reduced out of that and is an uncommitted.
Oh, it was originally 4.65?
Correct.
Yes.
I see, I see, I see. Thank you. I did not know that.
So not to complicate the discussion. So not to complicate the discussion, so that's a good point. What happens if the Comcast contract ultimately is not signed? At some point, when do we run out of time to repurpose?
I would think before the end of this year because it has to be committed.
Correct. That's correct.
Hey, council, Jordan Bogie again. For the record, I've been working on negotiating this contract with Comcast. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update. We are, it's been minor issues. You know, Comcast has their own bureaucracy as a large corporation that we've been working through. The final conversations that we're having right now are around some of the insurance requirement language. I believe that we are quite close, and in my current conversations with Comcast, we are all rowing in the same direction right now towards having this on the June 18 meeting. I have let them know that in order to do that, we're going to need to have it finalized next week so that it can come before council on the 18th for their approval. So just to give you a sense of timeline, if we're not meeting that deadline, if there are some other unresolved issues that I'm not aware of that come up then, I think that might be an opportunity to have that conversation. But I'm hoping that on the 18th, I'll have something to present to you all.
Okay, so, and I get the impression that it's already in process. And we're going to hear about JAs, we're going to hear about staffing at the PA's office, we're going to, it's already in process that you've already asked the departments what they would like to say.
Mark brought it up in our senior leadership team this week and sent out an email to all them, and then I forwarded to the separate electeds as well, just to make sure that we don't miss anybody.
Okay, so I would track, I don't want to rock the boat as far as with doing something different and just taking it away from them.
I would agree with casting the net a little bit broader to see what those needs are, because just as you mentioned that, it's like, oh yeah, I remember that. That was going to be coming up for us, and there's a context of our next year's budget too, so...
And Mark, what was the deadline for them to respond?
A week from Friday, so the 14th.
Okay, so we will put it on the following week's council time for your discussion. And actually, it won't be the following week because that's a holiday on that Wednesday, so it'll be the week after that.
And just acknowledging that there'll be way more requests than we have money for, we'll just have to struggle with that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're okay, we'll stay the course. Thanks for that. Any other last questions on this ARPA unbalanced projection? All right, hearing done. Are there any councillor reports?
I have a couple of reports. I attended the newly formed Chillachie Neighborhood Association meeting last night in Amboy. There were about 50 people there, I think, at least. Sheriff Horsh was there presenting information. I provided some information. They're very enthusiastic. I think for this small community, the neighborhood association could be a real vibrant and important part of connecting the community and connecting them better to the council. And then just additionally, I wanted to provide a little update on EMS District 2. We had our board meeting this week, and a surprising outcome actually is that, well, we've had a 10-year contract with the city of Vancouver to jointly provide ambulance service. The city of Vancouver no longer wants to partner with EMS District 2, and so that has left us. We decided that we would move forward with a one-year extension, and then we'll be figuring out amongst ourselves with the fire chiefs in its district. 3, 6, and Clark Cowlets are the three districts that make up EMS District 2. And yeah, it was a little concerning because in going our separate ways will mean significant costs potentially for both the city of Vancouver and, I don't know who, where the money will come from for, from the county or the fire districts or the small cities that make up EMS District 2. But I'll be, I'll be working on that along with Chair Medvee, who serves on the board as well.
So I just want to add one point. In light of all the other contacts we've had today, it's not EMS 2 trying to pull away from the contract. It's something different coming from the city of Vancouver, which is, so we've got a lot of work to do, but with the extension, hopefully, we can come to some better solution. Because it's not just redundancy and administrative costs, but from dispatch to resourcing, there's going to be some potential conflicts that'll cause conflicts in response times. So anyway, we'll get to that. Any other councillor reports?
Yeah, just a couple quick ones. Last night was RTC, and there were several interesting reports given. One, for example, was that there is a regional signal timing plan that is emerging where 28 different corridors in the county were ranked according to speed and traffic and so on for getting a better plan for the signal timing so that you can move on through those areas more quickly perhaps than now. So if anyone is interested in the ranking of those 28 corridors, I'd be happy to send that to you. Another interesting report I thought was the 2023 congestion management report was given, and it included some excellent handouts on the areas where there is significant congestion in the county. And I didn't know exactly how congestion was measured. Well, for one report, it is when the speed in the area is less than 45 miles per hour. For another one on the arterials, it was when you go at less than half of the posted speed, and then that is considered to be congestion. So, or it is congestion. So again, if anyone is interested in the listing of those areas, I'd be happy to share that with you as well.
I would be interested in receiving that information. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Happy to send it to you.
I want to tag off of that because it impacts District 3, and it impacts District 4, but it also is throughout the county, and kind of gets to the underlying message that I've been trying to get to our planners from roads, community planning. I want to highlight 192nd and 18th because part of that report last night at RTC was 18th Street is pretty well maxed out for congestion. And we're just on the cusp of all this additional development. One is that Shell property. Harmony is right there. Camas has built these huge warehouses. I don't know if there's going to be 18-wheelers or vans coming in and going. They're also going to put a commercial area there. Camas also is putting in their Northshore Development, which is going to have a lot of industrial and commercial traffic. Hewlett-Packer Campus, right on First. And then you have that whole new commercial area on 192nd just south of the English Pit and the Main Society. It's amazing how much is being built up. And you've got 192nd pretty well developed, and then you hit the county. And it goes from four lanes to two. And with, so my point is, you know, I know our planners talk, but boy, we're not keeping up, you know, from Camas to Vancouver to the county, right in that cluster where it all comes together. We are so far behind right now. There was a request for a mirror on English Pit so people can get out of their driveways, and during certain times of year, certain times of the day, you cannot get in or out of a driveway because of the nonstop flow of traffic. So I feel sad for those folks that live there. 187th Street, we have gotten a lot of emails about that, mainly because of the Shell property as well, or Snell, I'm not sure, the Shell or Snell. But when the school buses are coming by, when there's normal rush hour traffic, you cannot get on or off that side street. And then people just do risky things to pull into fast-moving traffic. Anyway, so I really encourage our manager to talk to our planners and say, especially at least that one area is just so far behind in road infrastructure. And I just want to mention the Northshore area, they don't even have a notional street connections with the county, and they're putting hundreds of homes in, commercial and industry, that's going to connect to substandard typical one and a half-lane county roads. And it's just like, okay, this doesn't make sense. Anyway, thanks for that report on RTC. Any other councillor reports?
Yep, a couple. I was able yesterday evening to join the Clark County Arts Commission at their meeting. Appreciate the work they do. You know, they struggle, like any group, with, you know, what is their purpose, what can they do with the resources that they have, and that's a real challenge for them. And I just appreciate, I got to sit down some discussions about lifetime achievement awards, and it was a really neat experience to be there. So I just wanted to thank them for that. And then I wanted to thank Community Planning. I was able to go to the downtown library and join the open house for the scope of the EIS for the comp plan. And I sat there and I watched Oliver and team talking about the comp plan and how you can deliver the comp plan in its entirety in a little open house like that is virtually impossible. So I just wanted to give him a shout out for being out there in the community. We had pretty good turnout there, I think, and I enjoyed sitting down with people and chatting and hearing what people thought. That's all for today.
And hopefully you'll pass those kind comments on to Oliver. Okay, so works session requests?
None today.
Okay, so we'll get to policy updates, number eight, 8.1, updated proposal on the Safe Haven Sober Living Community Project.
Yes, thank you, council. For the record again, this is Jordan Bogie, policy analyst. So this is continuing kind of some conversations that have been had about the 1406 funding for this project since January when council first approved the funding. So approved $130,000 to the Safe Haven Sober Living project. They were originally going to do remodels in the hotel facility that they were leasing, are leasing, to include electrical plumbing, you know, laundry, dining facility upgrades to the building. However, as we've discussed at some subsequent council times, we have not been able to get assurances that they will be able to stay as a tenant in that lease for at least a period of five years to provide the supportive housing, which is really the minimum that we can allow in order to just make sure that any investment that the county is doing, that we're being good stewards of public funding and assuring that it would be used for this purpose. Chris Tobobin, who is kind of the head of Lumen Fidelis, who is a nonprofit who's managing this, has been working really hard and trying to get creative in a way that we can still provide these services to these folks even without the assurance. And so this is the workaround that has been proposed. And so it would be the same amount that council has already approved, $130,000, but instead of using it for infrastructure upgrades to the property itself, the funding would be used to purchase a small modular home unit, kind of a tiny house-style home. It's made by Wolf Industries up in Battleground. And basically, what they can do with this is, I believe the unit itself is about $85,000, and the other costs would be to do the permitting, do the hookups so that they could get it on the property. And this building would have laundry, dining, and kitchen facilities. So though the motel building doesn't have those facilities for folks that would be living there, this building would give them the ability to have those services still on site. And if for some reason, because we were not able to get the assurances that they'd be able to stay for at least five years in the lease, this building is movable and would be able to be transferred to a different property for the same purpose if that were to happen. And so that is the proposal that's in front of council today.
Council, questions?
I just have a couple of questions. How many people will be, are we anticipating will be housed at this site?
So I wasn't able to recall exactly how many folks. I did actually send Chris an email yesterday asking him if he had a sense of how many people would be there at any given time and then over the lifetime of the project. And I have not heard back from him yet. I know he's pretty busy. But I do have that request out to see the exact number of folks that would be served.
And then I was wondering how many square feet this modular tiny home slash living space would be?
I believe it is in the proposal that is in front of you. Kristin, would you mind scrolling down a little bit?
I was just wondering if it would be big enough for the people that we're planning to serve?
I guess I'm not seeing it here, but I certainly can ask about the square footage. I know that they believe that it should be suitable for the purpose, but I'll find out.
Great, thank you. I think it's very creative. I appreciate them, Chris, coming together with an alternative proposal to make this work, and especially appreciate working with Wolf Industries that's in my district.
Used to be in mine, but I favor them too. And my understanding was, this isn't, you kind of characterize it in different ways. It's not a place for people to live. It's really more of a community space, place to wash clothes, a place to have dinner. So it sounds like a great modular movable solution. So I fully support it to whatever the square footage is. It's always amazing how much livable space you can actually have in the smallest places.
That's correct, yeah. Thank you. It is just for that purpose.
Yes, definitely supportive moving forward. I appreciate the work that Chris has done in this. I remember reading about it in the newspaper, and I'm like, oh, that's sad, we're going to lose all of those spaces. And then he stepped up, which was really surprising to me, and a huge task that he took on himself. So appreciate the work he's done. Look forward to seeing this.
Karen?
Just a quick question regarding ownership. Since we don't own the tiny house or whatever it is called, in the event that it needed to be moved, is there a commitment that it would be moved for the same purpose by whoever? I don't know if that's Lumen Fidelis, or I don't know who that is who would do that, but would it be moved?
So councillor, yeah, so my understanding is yes. So basically, Community Services, they're the ones who are managing this contract. And basically, we, as part of that, when I say we, I mean the county and Community Services, they typically, we want assurances that, you know, originally, we wanted a five-year lease assurance, but in lieu of that, we would be asking for assurance that this is used for its intended purpose.
Great, thank you. Good.
Just one last question that's related, but kind of a different subject. I don't think I recall in the year and a half that I've been on the council ever seeing any like fee waiver requests coming in for like affordable housing projects. Do we ever have that, or do we have any mechanism to waive fees for affordable housing projects?
That's a great question, councillor. I have not been a part of that in my eight or nine months here at the county myself, but would be happy to follow up and...
I just, I mean, it happens pretty commonly in the city of Vancouver, just haven't seen it happen here, so I'd be curious on that. That's all.
So on 8.1, do we have all four thumbs? So, on 8.1, do we have all four thumbs up? I think so? We do? Okay, thank you. So, going to 8.2, Independence Month Proclamation.
Me again, council. So, okay, so I believe this is on your screen. So, this came to us from a few residents, as we heard during public comment the last couple of days. And so, just, I'd like to back up for just a second and just talk a little bit about the process of proclamations, just for the public's benefit. Typically, either community organizations or individuals will submit proclamations either to council or staff. They are vetted internally, often edited, and, you know, I'm, I'll say I'm, I'm the one typically that's editing them on behalf of council, taking council's feedback into consideration, and so trying to balance the needs of having the, the voice of council with the requests of our residents and our community organizations. And so, based on the Independence Month Proclamation that was read yesterday and described earlier, I, you know, I, I edit it into, basically, you know, from my understanding of council's voice, something that, you know, I, I thought meshed the two together. I, you know, I did take the, the comment and hear that, you know, the folks that submitted it felt like they would prefer the originally submitted document, which frankly, I, from my perspective as the person writing, I, I didn't feel like it necessarily fit the county's voice or style. And so, so in the spirit of that request, I, I have this Independence Month Proclamation in, in front of you to either accept, reject, or edit as you, as you see fit, and happy to answer any questions or, or talk through anything with council as you'd like.
The only thing I would add to that, and you accurately described the normal process, typically, we approve or disapprove even moving forward before we have staff time work so diligently on something. So, I appreciate you showing that initiative to take that additional work on. So, what is the council's comments or questions? I'll start. You know, I talked to the mayor about this yesterday. I said, do you do, have you ever heard of someone doing a proclamation for Fourth of July month? And the answer was no. We do a proclamation on the Fourth of July. It is perhaps the most famous holiday we have, and I think it somewhat dilutes it by calling it a month instead of the Fourth of July, which it is. So, I'm not in favor of doing anything more than maybe a proclamation for the Fourth of July, which would require further editing to eliminate the word month. But what are, what are other people think?
Well, Chair, if you put forward something like that, I would support it. However, to my way of thinking, the Fourth of July is a, it's a federal holiday. It's well-known. I don't think it needs a proclamation by the county. And furthermore, I was concerned when someone, as I understood in today's testimony, said that if, if the proclamation, as they drafted it, was not kept exactly the same, that they would sue us. And we're not open to that for a proclamation that would be intended to express the glory of our country. So, I, I don't support going forward with this proclamation at this time, but if you wish to change it to the day, I, I would support that.
Thank you, Karen. Sue Glan?
I, I guess I would agree with councillor Bowerman that if you wanted to move forward with just the day, would be fine, or, or maybe not do it at all.
I agree.
Glan?
I, to me, it makes minimal difference. I'd be okay with moving it to a day. I think the purpose is to make the proclamation and have it be a part of the record, and whether it's for a full month or a full day, to me, it doesn't really make much of a material difference, but I'm fine either way.
I think I'm generally hearing support to amend it to, to have a proclamation for the Fourth of July, a day. Is that correct? Thumbs up?
Yep.
Okay. Anything further on this one?
No, thank you, council. I'll make those edits and get that in front of you probably next week.
Super, thank you. And thanks for the prompt to do a proclamation. I don't think we've ever done one for the Fourth of July before. We have no executive sessions. I don't believe there's anything else, so we will be adjourned.